You are.
Perfect, thanks. All right, we'll go and get started. Call the May 11th, 2020 meeting to order. Clerk, you can take a roll.
Walters?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
DeVorak?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Sarchet?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. I'd take a motion, please.
So moved.
I can.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public hearing for the vacation of the overland flow easement in Whitetail Ridge Platte 2. Jenny, did you provide me the stuff I needed on this?
Yes.
Do you know where?
It should have been on the outside of your folder.
Yeah, I don't see it. All right, hold on. You had too many papers. All right, we're trying to work remotely. Sorry, guys. All right, so it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing on the proposed vacation of a portion of the overland flow easement in Whitetail Ridge Platte 2. I'm going to clerk when the notice is published.
May 1st.
Any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
Awesome. This time, I would like staff to provide a report.
If you like, I can do that, this Kathleen.
Thanks.
Yeah, MCR has a potential buyer interested in lot 5 of Whitetail Ridge Platte 2, which is on the south side of Hug Drive. Shipography and that kind of thing. There was an overland flow easement recorded across that lot. However, they're having trouble siding their house, given the size of easement. So we've had Shite Hattery do some revised calculations, and they've determined that the overland flow easement was oversized for the flow that's there. So this is actually just vacating the exit, which would facilitate their siding their home on that lot. They're also recording, I believe it's going to be today or pushing tomorrow, a new MOE for minimum opening elevation, or that will impact slightly the home elevations and the opening elevations on lot 5. Recommending the approval of the first reading on that vacation.
Okay. Anybody from council have any questions, comments for Kathleen? Is there anyone on the phone who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed vacation? If not, I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
So moved.
Roll call.
Just the second. Was it Dave? Okay, DeVorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is the first reading of ordinance 2020-600. If there's no questions, I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries. It's time to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing on the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. Ask clerk when the notice is published.
May 1st.
Any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
I'd like staff to provide a report, please.
Yeah, I could go ahead and do that, too. Again, this is Kathleen. Roger Silver is on the line, and it looks like Andy Snetsler is on there as well, I believe, to answer questions. What you'll see before you is a comprehensive plan amendment for the future land use plan. The idea here is to amend the future land use plan in accordance with a concept plan that was provided by Mr. Snetsler and his mother, Mrs. Lilisgow, for their two properties at the southwest corner of East Southside Drive and Northwest 44th Street. In general, the future land use plan changes include a somewhat of a reduction in size to the area that was designated for commercial use, elimination of some high-density residential that was shown on the current comprehensive plan, and relocation of medium-density residential so that it surrounds the new commercial area. And the bulk of the rest of the area is low-density residential with some areas set aside for park and open space. This did go through P&amp;Z and received a recommendation in favor of the change. Actually, this, in conjunction with the rezoning, the next public hearing was actually a P&amp;Z three times, so. There were some changes that were made to increase the size of the commercial area from what they, how drastically they were originally proposing to reduce it. So I came up with a pretty good compromise on that.
Is there any questions for Kathleen?
Yeah. Kathleen, so I can keep these straight. I'm looking at, so it's page 7 in the packet. You've got the current concept for commercial is 32 and 1/2. The original concept for commercial was just short of 21 acres. That was their original concept. What was the, or equivalently, what was the comprehensive plan calling for?
It was roughly 38 acres originally. If you look at page 2 of my memo, you can kind of see I overlaid the old comprehensive, or the current comprehensive plan uses over the concept plan at the bottom of that page. And you can see the area there that's shown in red was what was shown in commercial. You can see, it didn't change a lot on the west. There's a strip of townhomes now, so it's reduced a little bit on the west side. The primary change is probably to the south. There's an area down there that's got a lot of natural trees and that kind of thing, and they're looking to have some residential there. Again, they originally were wanting to reduce it to 20 acres, which essentially cut it in half, so kind of came back with a proposal that's closer. They did, in the packet of information on the rezoning, send along a concept plan that was based on Menards in Ankeny. The idea there is not that they're going to necessarily have a Menards. It was more to give a sense of scale in terms of how much you could do with that 32 acres. And you can see that there's room for Menards and some outlots and that kind of thing, so.
So I'd like to jump on that, because that was going to be my question here down the road a little bit. So for the developer, whether it's him or whoever's on the line, I'm curious about the intent of putting that in there when that was a specific concern of the residents in the area, that there would be a big box store going in there. I appreciate the context around how much land there is, but I'm trying to understand why that would, why you would pick one of the specific concerns raised by the residents as your example for that use, which is very preliminary at this point. Can we speak to that?
This is Roger Silver. I'd like to speak to that if I could. Does everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Again, we were trying to initially minimize the size of the commercial area. And I think through the public hearings, through the planning and zoning process, understood that the, it was the desire of the city not to lose any more commercial ground than they needed to. And again, the exhibit we showed was not intended to be our plan. In fact, I think, speaking on behalf of Andy and Mary and his mom, Genevieve Lilisgow, that they really didn't have desire to develop commercial up there, but they're trying to honor the city's comp plan. And we wanted to, when the size parcel was being discussed, we wanted to at least show that there was, that the 28, which became 31 acres, was a significant size and could allow for a lot of square footage. I guess I wasn't specifically aware of neighbors specifically opposed to a big box store. I mean, certainly if it was going to be organized differently, I don't think the developer doesn't have any qualms about that, how it's developed. It was just really a matter of trying to take a local example that people would be familiar with and showing how that could work within that size.
So it sounds like your audience, you know, your intended audience was P&amp;Z and the city to see that even though we would ultimately be reducing our commercial there a little bit, there's still quite a bit. So your audience was the city and the concern with reducing our commercial versus the citizens' complaints or, you know, concerns with a big box store, so I'm following.
One thing I want to mention, too, is because it was pulled from the Menards site, it doesn't have things on it like buffers that would be required to transition those uses. So that's not, I mean, that's a requirement for your zoning code. So there would be some transitional things that you don't see on that plan as well.
And I guess, if I can just take a minute to speak on behalf of the owner and developer, you know, Andy and Mary and his mom look at this as, this has been their home for a long time. The rolling hills, the mature trees, they want to develop it in such a way that it's respectful to the natural landform, and we felt that single family was appropriate for a lot of this. And so Andy's desire is, if it's going to develop, that he develop it correctly so that we don't lose all of the trees and the ponds and the rolling nature of most of that south and western portion of the property. And so we've minimized the amount of multifamily that's being used strictly as a use buffer between that and the commercial. And I think the ultimate development of that commercial would certainly be something that is flexible. We just wanted to show the potential size or amount of square footage that that size of a parcel could handle. So I think his primary purpose with the concept plan and with the zonings proposed in front of you were to establish a good series of lower-density residential districts in and around his current house and on the ground that he's lived and worked on for decades.
Counsel, have any other further questions for Mr. Silver or Kathleen at this point? Is there anyone on the phone who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed amendment?
Wait, yes.
Hold on.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yep.
Dave Mulder, resident on 1312 Northwest 44th Street, which is just north of the proposed commercial property zoning. And I am, I am a family are opposed to this proposal.
Could you explain?
Yeah, we appreciate the natural landscaping, the trees and the views, as well as the limited amount of traffic and exposure that is out here for our family and our boys, as well as, you know, we don't really want to be next to parking lots and big commercial areas. That's why we moved out here. And I also believe it'll very greatly affect my property and value of my property with that moving in.
Thank you, Dave. Is there anyone else on the phone who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed amendment?
This is Doug Leighton. I'm at 1420 East Southside Drive. I guess my biggest concern with the design is the fact that there's a discussion of a bike trail going from the campgrounds into this neighborhood. I think connecting a campground, a public campground into a neighborhood is probably a safety concern. And I think that's something that should be taken into consideration.
So upon that, what is, is that truly the case? I'm just looking here, and I can't make heads or tails of that comment, but certainly would echo that.
If you look on, so if you look on the west side of the property, there's an orange line that goes along as the border, there is a proposal of a bike trail going through that area. That would go then across the highway, across Highway 415 and into the campgrounds. I think bringing a bike trail from a public campground into this neighborhood, whether it's my house or whether it's all these houses, I think is a safety concern. I don't think connecting that's a great idea.
To clarify, the comprehensive plan does show a trail through that area. It does not show it connecting to the campground. So there was the potential that if there was residential on the south side of 415 that was incorporated into Polk City, being on a Polk City side of the Ankeny annexation boundary line, that could be connected. But there's never been a discussion about connecting the campgrounds.
Well, that was.
Eventually, it would connect to the Neil Smith Trail, I mean, but not a direct connection to the campground.
Which the Neil Smith Trail goes directly into the campground.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, but it was shown more to the north, heading north instead of to the campgrounds directly.
But, okay, if you walk that trail, if you're on the Neil Smith Trail and you go on it heading towards the south, it'll go directly into the campground that's right across the street. It is, it would be a direct connection between that campground and this neighborhood.
The connection isn't shown on, at this point, on a comp plan.
So, so the, if the camp, if it's not going to go across, then it's connected to the Neil Smith Trail, where would this, where would that bike trail go?
I'm sorry, I'm pulling it up right now on my own computer here. Apologize, I can't share my screen. Trail, I'm trying to figure out. Sorry, I'm a little slow here. Yeah, I mean, it could, it doesn't have to. I guess that to me is a little bit of a separate issue from the zoning, but.
Kathleen, this is Roger Silver. If I could jump in just for a moment and.
Hold on, hold on.
Sure.
Roger, go ahead, and Doug, just a minute.
Okay.
I just want to say, again, on behalf of the developer and owner, that we were trying to comp plan by showing that trail in that location. I don't think that that is necessarily an integral part of what Andy's trying to do. If that trail is an important piece to the city of Polk City, we have a place to accommodate it. And if it were to turn, that needed to go a different route or went away, I don't think that's any, anything that Andy couldn't work with either of those scenarios. That's not necessarily something we are proposing, other than the fact that, again, it was just shown on the comp plan, and we were trying to honor that by reserving a space for it. That's all I had, thanks.
Okay, Doug.
No, I just, like I said, if it's shown on the plan, I guess I thought this would be the time to at least express that there's concern.
I think that's fair, and I have no problem with talking to P&amp;Z about that, too, as any kind of developer plans move forward. I don't think that, you know, having an actual connection there is not an integral part of the city's. I think it's shown as an option, but it's not an integral part of the overall plan.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to, so Jenny, how many people do we have on the line?
There are five.
Okay. There's a lot going on here, and this is the rezoning step, just to level set. Like I said last time when we set this meeting, this whole thing scares the heck out of me. The P&amp;Z saw this, what, four times over the course of six months? We've got a number of revisions. It's clear to me that there have been very different conversations that have taken place from the developer to the neighbors that are taking place from the developer and the city, as evidenced by the fact that supposedly, you know, the rolling hills are an integral concern to their development, but then when, on the commercial land, they show the worst-case scenario in terms of leveling and taking out trees. So whether it's where we're going to pave roads, whether we're going to put fences, where we're going to put trails, this, the reason, the amendment to the comprehensive plan probably makes sense, but very little after that does, quite honestly, for me. So I empathize with the perspective of the residents out there, because I don't know what, putting myself in your shoes, I don't know what I would be thinking, given all the conversations that have taken place to this point.
I was just going to clarify that, remember, this is the comprehensive plan. You're not to the rezoning yet. That is the next hearing.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, anyway. So can we get through the comp review, and then we'll move on to the zoning? Is everybody good with that? All right. I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next item, Resolution 2020-48, approving a comp plan amendment. Need a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now time to close regular meeting and open the public hearing on the proposed rezoning of property located along Northwest 44th Street. City Iowa owning is this Snetsler and the Scow property, sorry. Ask the clerk when the notice is published.
May 1st.
Excellent. Have you received any written comments for or against?
Yes, sir, I've received two.
Go ahead, and have you read those, I think?
Jerry and Barb Greenwell of 2620 East Southside Drive wrote the following comments. They are against the proposed rezoning because it will destroy their livelihood with all the noise from construction and all the traffic. It would be nice if Polk City would put in a city park as a buffer zone. The other one received was from Dave Mulder of 1312 Northwest 44th Street. He stated that he wanted to submit, again, his disagreement and objection to the proposal for commercial property directly adjacent to their current residence. They do not agree to zoning this commercial property and fully object to the current proposal. There must be a better plan to adjust traffic flow lights and the main intersection off 415 and Northwest 44th before any additional property changes are made, as well as infrastructure. Please share with us this survey that was referred to in prior council meeting where residents prefer strip malls and large department stores right next to their homes. It wasn't us, we didn't get a survey. They moved out here to get away from town and city living and currently enjoy the views and peacefulness of no other businesses or multiple high-density houses around. They ask, why not propose a park or larger estate homes around this area if you're looking for more tax dollars for the city? They ask, why haven't we filed all the current properties already opened, or, excuse me, filled, the current properties already opened and zoned commercial in Polk City? Also, most of those that live in this community commute to other areas for jobs, and matter of fact, don't want a Menards or Walmart or any other large commercial business next door. He asked, city council men and women, do you have a large commercial property adjacent to your house? Do you want the lights and traffic glaring in your windows and noise all day and night? Do you have views of parking lots, big buildings and fences adjacent? There are multiple big store locations and open commercial lots currently available within 15 to 20 miles. There's no need for more next door to their house. Why don't you look for land along the main corridor of Highway 415 where the main traffic is? Why haven't you? Why can't you leave prime land in ag production? Is it all about the money? Why haven't you come to us personally and talked to us and asked about our interests and support to work together versus railroad the ideas through? This is supposed to be a small community with respect and pride for the people and their better interests, and the reason we originally moved out here seven years ago. Mulders and other neighbors I have talked to here that have lived here much longer and more recent have full objection to commercial property. Thanks for providing answers and listening to your resident taxpayers. And by the way, I still have not received response from my last email. We look forward to a changed proposal that would be more appreciated.
Thanks, Jenny. At this time, I'd like staff to provide a report on this.
Yeah, before you tonight is essentially four different zoning requests, rezoning requests. The first that's listed is 82.82 acres to R1. The concept plan shows approximately 139 homes in that area. Keep in mind that the concept plan is not being approved tonight, so, you know, it's not cast in stone. The second is for rezoning 31.86 acres to R2. I guess I apologize, the 139 acre, single-family lots are both the R1 lots and a little bit smaller lots that are zoned R2. Then the third is rezoning 14.6 acres to R2A, which would be the townhomes. Those would be in an area that's surrounding the commercial area. You'll see that on the concept plan, one of the things that was discussed is having connectivity from the single-family residential out to 44th as the main street, rather than having all of the traffic directed to Southside Drive. That's for emergency purposes, as well as just general circulation and access, as well as wear and tear on East Southside Drive. And then the final one is to rezone 34.16 acres to C2. That is the area, if you look on the aerial photo that's on the top of the memo, that is the flatter area that does not have very many, if any, existing trees on that property. That area was larger on the comprehensive plan in terms of proposed commercial use. P&amp;Z, as it went through the process, was concerned with maintaining a large number of acres for commercial use, as that was identified as a high priority of the comprehensive plan, understanding that residential develops first and quicker, and that if you don't set aside the areas for commercial initially, then essentially you have no opportunity for commercial later because it's all residential.
Anybody else, anybody else have anything to add from staff or developer?
Mr. Mayor, again, Roger Silver. I wanted to echo the, some of the neighbors' concerns. I think Andy shares many of those concerns with the commercial, but through our meetings this winter and even into previous year, we were, as Kathleen just mentioned, guided towards proposing zoning for the entire thing, as if we were to come in and simply ask for R1 zoning where Andy wants to start development, that be less likely to get approval on that sort of a scenario. So we did come in, per their suggestion, and ask for the commercial piece. And again, through the multiple P&amp;Z meetings, most of that was related to the P&amp;Z wanting larger commercials than we had even shown at that time, so. And just to go back to one of Rob's comments, regarding the selection of the commercial exhibit that we showed, you know, that came. exhibit that we showed, you know, that came directly from a suggestion from Snyder and Associates based on a March email where they had even suggested, "We show a concept to demonstrate the size and types of commercial buildings that could be developed with, in parentheses, big box store with small outlots in front for restaurants or similar." So again, we were trying to respond directly to a staff comment with the example we shown. Andy is not in favor of trying to develop that. He's dubious as to whether or not that will ever develop. And again, I don't think it's necessarily his desire even to rezone that commercial. It's just, that's what we've been told, in order to get the residential changed and get single families started out there, you're gonna have to rezone everything. And so, just kind of to be clear from our side, we're not, we're not trying to push for commercial so much as we're just trying, again, honor the comp plan and the P and Z wishes. Thank you.
I just wanna respond.
Thanks, Roger.
One, one thing is that we had suggested looking at big box. We also suggested looking at other kinds of commercials, so not just proposing one concept. We had suggested they come forward with a couple of different alternatives that might show how, you know, how it could potentially be developed. So that's, I guess, one thing I wanna make, make sure. The other thing is, we've encouraged commercial, rezoning to commercial first, because it's, in our experience, it is better to get the commercial in place before the residential comes in. Otherwise, you have more neighbors that don't understand that could be commercial, and they try to come back in later after you have all those homes, then you wind up with a lot of people, a lot of residents that can be unhappy with commercial zoning. I mean, we've already got some residential out there, and obviously, those folks are not happy about rezoning to commercial. And if you had, if you build this with all of your single-family homes, I mean, you'd have a very difficult time with rezoning commercial without having a lot, even more objections. So from our perspective, we were trying to get it on the table sooner, rather than have more development with potentially residential in the backyard without the property owners being aware.
Yeah, and I don't dispute any of that. I mean, they, the developers made mention to the fact that the, the residential is the fastest, easiest way for them to make money, so that's why they're going that, that direction in one of the more recent P and Z meetings. I do think it's worth pointing out that the, Kathleen or whoever can speak, how far back does our comprehensive planning go that shows that specific area and, and even more larger acreage than what we're doing here as proposed to be commercial? Can you give me a date range on how far back that planning goes?
Well, the comp plan was adopted in 2016. There were public, a lot of public meetings and public input sessions during that year. I mean, we had multiple public meetings and advice and like the, you know, the Four Seasons Festival and things like that. So that started in 2015.
Okay.
The comp plan before that, I don't know that included this area.
Okay.
That's a growth area.
So, so at least four years old and potentially, my point is, that's been allocated for commercial when the, the annexation happened. So to, I can't remember who, who made the comment on the questions. There's a lot of good questions on there, and I don't know how many of those questions have been addressed with the developer, but that's, that's where that needs to start, certainly.
Any other council have questions or comment for Kathleen or Roger?
I have a comment, but if somebody can help me out here, if I remember right, there was proposed commercial out there long before that ever became part of Polk City. Does that sound familiar to anybody else?
It's familiar to me in the sense that there was commercial, I know, on down, what they called the Q-tip area, which is where the boat sales place. I know that was gonna be commercial. I can't speak to this particular area, but there was commercial in the general area, I know.
Not that it makes any difference, because it's our decision now, but our, Rob asked for dates, so.
Yeah, and that, that, I think we're trying to make the same larger point here, Ron. This isn't a new thing. This isn't a, a new, it is because it, you know, the developer has this proposal to, to do everything that they laid out here, and part of that is annexation, and then it's rezoning, and then it's, you know, site plan approval and, and on down the list, but...
I don't, we have always, as a city, we've always tried desperately not to put commercial directly adjacent to single-family residential. I, I know it hasn't been true always, but in most cases on new developments, we don't let that, if I remember right, we don't let commercial butt up the existing single family, or try not to. There've been a few cases, but that's always been my desire. I know how I would feel if...
I agree, Ron. But is that, I have a, have a question on the... So all the residents were, were brought into or had surveys? Is that correct? Any of this area that would be affected by this rezoning has, have all the residents had a chance to really understand, aside from, I think it was Doug and, I'm sorry, was it Dave the first caller on the line? Yeah, so, I mean, what, what is new here? I'd like to understand what's new from both perspectives that there, that, that hasn't been at least talked about and understood on both sides, or that it's just been a divide the whole time, or am I missing something?
This is Doug Layton. I think many of us lived here long before that proposal of 2016. You know, when, when you're saying that that was discussed, that that was a, going to be commercial in the, in the future comp plan, I'm surprised that wasn't addressed with the residents in the area. That was never, that never came up, that that was gonna be commercial. We had heard rumors that there was going to possibly be a residential area over there, and most of us understood that, and that, that's progress, that's kind of things that happen. But that's a large tract of commercial ground showing index to, you know, where we live, and it was, it was decided after we moved here.
That is correct. This is Dave Mulder, and I, same thing. It was proposed that it could potentially be some larger estates or other additional residential and some maybe parks for big open areas for other families in this area, but nothing from a commercial standpoint, or even the high density that's being proposed here. Otherwise, you know, when we first moved out, this offer 16 in 2012.
Yeah, and to be clear, I was not, I was not insinuating that everybody knew about everything when they moved anywhere. I'm just kind of trying to understand how, if there was a survey done, or if everybody really was aware what was going on here as of late, based on the fact that we've had this many revisions come back and have gone through? Am I, what, what's been done to communicate so that we're just now getting to this point?
So Dave, I can answer that question. I send out letters to all properties within 250 feet of the proposed rezoning. They get that notice two weeks prior to the P and Z meetings, and then they receive those notices also prior to this meeting. As far as the surveys, I, I think there's two different things going on. If I had to make an assumption, you've got what the developer was telling the residents that purchased lots from the developer back when they moved in 10, 15 years ago, what his thoughts were on how he would develop it. And then you have the surveys that Polk City did in conjunction with the comprehensive plan with all Polk City residents, not just specific to this area, but, but the future of what Polk City was going to look at, look like. And those meetings were public. Kathleen mentioned that there was a table at the Four Seasons Festival, so the information was out there, but it was not specific to this neighborhood.
Okay.
And Jenny's correct in that the notices, the specific notices that she sent to those people within 250 feet are what's required by law to be sent out before rezoning, both in accordance with the Iowa code and in accordance with your municipal code. And there's no surveys. The survey would be, had been in, in conjunction with your comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you.
I have a statement. This is Jerry Greenwell. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Jerry.
Yes. We moved up here about 30 years ago, and when Polk City wanted to annex us, they said we needed to do it because Ankeny was gonna make this all commercial. So that's why we went ahead, and they said, "We need them," because they would leave the residence. This is, you know, we signed up to be annexed 10 years ago. We were told Ankeny wanted this property.
How long has our agreement with annexation, East and West of 44th, been in place?
Oh, probably 10, 15 years, at least.
Be my guess, yeah.
I'd have to go back. I don't have it here. I'm at home, and I don't have it here, access to it, but it's, your last one that you approved has been in place probably at least seven years, and I wanna say the one before that was probably in place 10 years, at least.
It would have been before 2005, because Mike Sparks was the city administrator at the time. I think it started in 2005.
Anywhere between 15 and 20 years, probably.
So it's possible what he was saying is actually true, that there was at one point 30 years ago that Ankeny was looking to come that way?
Yeah, well, they, Jerry, well, maybe. I mean, that's not the area, that's, that's not been the natural progression of Ankeny, but yeah, at, at that point in time, that sure could have been. I just don't know.
Yeah.
I had, the last note that I had was that in 2013, it was extended for another 10 years, so I would guess it probably had a 10-year extension from the previous time, don't you think, Amy?
Yes, that would be my guess, so.
2000, 2003, yeah, yeah. Well, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna echo what Ron said. I, I don't know of any case that commercial butts up right to residential, and this would seem to be the case. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Those on the phone, and probably many of those that aren't on here, would probably feel the same way, and I haven't been exposed to this as much as P and Z or others, but I don't know. I just don't feel... That's my thoughts, and I don't know how to remedy that. I know this has been hashed over, so I feel very ill-equipped to, to make a, a decision, I guess, based on the fact that I, this is not normal, I guess.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
I'm with you, Dave, but at the same time, it's, it's been our, I, what I do agree with is P and Z's insistence, insistence, excuse me, that maintain the plan that we've had for a good number of years, that it's possible that it doesn't go as far back as some of these residents. It certainly does for a lot of them, but that has been our plan. And, and we have a, an issue with being overly residential in terms of our tax base. We've talked about that a number of times. That is on, on one side. On the other side, you, you've got those concerns that you mentioned. It's interesting to me that some of these people who bought their land from the same developer that we're seeing now are trying to, I think, pit us against them in terms of, well, we just really wanna do this piece of it and not that piece of it, specifically showing what I would consider to be the worst-case scenario for the commercial lot. There's a number of ways that that could be developed and aren't a big box store, and quite frankly, to, to see a big dock store there in my lifetime is probably not gonna happen, but who knows, it could down the road. That's why this, this whole thing, this, this whole thing is very problematic and very eerie of another development that we've just been our last couple of meetings on that have been a, a problem the whole way through. That's, I don't, I don't, I'm not answering any of your questions, Dave, but I share a lot of them.
One thing I could suggest is, your code requires a 30-foot buffer between residential and commercial. As part of the rezoning, you could put a, a restriction on it where that you would put, say, 100-foot buffer, or some larger buffer that would give the ability to have landscaping and more green space up against those existing residential. And that's just a thought of a, of one potential compromise.
Keeping in mind that at this point in the process, that would require the developer's agreement in order to do that, written agreement in order to do that.
This is Roger Silver. May I jump in for just a moment?
Please.
We did split the rezoning into four separate zoning pieces, and again, I, as I've stated earlier, I think it's Andy's desire to begin development on some of this larger lot, single-family in the southeast corner, and then eventually move up to the northwest corner. We have been also dealing with a sewer trunk main that has a section that goes through core ground that would need a permit, and that permit was applied for and is stalled because there, Cora said, "Well, this isn't even rezoned." So I guess one of the things I would mention, since it seems like the focus is primarily on the commercial, again, I understand what Kathleen and P and Z was, is describing about wanting to get all this zoning in place before you have residential coming in with homes that might then oppose the commercial piece, but if it was a matter of not feeling comfortable with the commercial piece and maybe looking at alternatives up there, if we could at least request to potentially look at the residential in the southwest, maybe you could withhold approval of a preliminary plat until the commercial thing is resolved, but at least a rezoning does give us a trigger that would allow us to proceed with a permitting for a trunk sewer from the Corps of Engineers, so that's all I had.
I'll echo what Roger's saying there with the Corps of Engineers. They're, they do need to see some progress moved on this site before they will entertain the, the permitting of the, the sewer. And the permitting is going to take some time, so if, if we can at least get the, the readings done on this, on the rezoning and get that approved, we can demonstrate to the Corps of Engineers that this is a real project, it is a real thing, and it, it will trigger them to move.
And that trunk server, trunk sewer serves the whole property, the commercial and the residential?
Yes.
It, it would serve almost the entire property. The only lots that it wouldn't serve at the moment are the nine lots in the southeast corner, which are the state residential around Genevieve Luliskow's current home.
Is there any other questions or comments, or anybody else on the phone who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed rezoning? Hearing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
No move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, First Reading of Ordinance 2020-900, rezoning 82.82 acres to R1. Need a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments, discussion? Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Devorak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
No.
Motion carries. Next item, First, First Reading of Ordinance 2020-1000, rezoning 31.86 acres to R2. rezoning thirty-one point eight-six acres to R2, need a motion please?
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments, discussion? Roll call please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorec?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
No.
Motion carries. Next item, first reading of ordinance twenty-two thousand one one zero zero, rezoning fourteen point six-zero acres to R2A. Need a motion? So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments, discussion? Roll call please.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorec?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Sarchet?
No.
Walters?
Yes.
Is that three noes Jenny?
Correct.
Motion fails. Next item, first reading of ordinance twenty-two thousand twelve hundred, rezoning thirty-four point one-six acres to C2. Need a motion please?
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments, discussion? Roll call please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorec?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Sarchet?
No.
Motion fails. Moving on, consent agenda, need a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments, discussion? Roll call please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorec?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on into new business, business items, item A, resolution twenty-two approving pay-up number four for the twenty-nineteen street repair project in the amount of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents, Kathleen? Kathleen is muted.
Oh.
Sorry.
There she is.
Yeah, this pay application represents work completed through May first, twenty-twenty, and the project is nearly complete at this point in time, the work they have left to do is surface restoration and sealing joints, so we are recommending payment to the contractor
Okay, questions, comments, discussion, motion?
Motion to approve resolution twenty-two thousand fifty-two.
Second. Please.
DeVorec?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries, next item, resolution twenty-two thousand fifty-three, approving a memorandum of understanding with Metro Waste Authority and approving an agreement for the collection of solid waste between Metro Waste Authority and Ankeny Sanitation. Chelsea?
In your packet is an agreement with MWA. As part of that agreement, they are asking us to amend their contract with the cities of Bondurant, Norwalk, and Windsor Heights to be added to that contract. This would be effective July first, pricing for each residential household will be eight dollars and thirty-four cents, and that would be added to the city utility bill for consolidated trash pickup.
Questions, comments?
Has, has this been communicated to Citizen Re?
Not yet Ron, so we, I mean, we've done the posting of the agenda, the council has talked about it at a couple of meetings, so that is the only communication we've had with the public. After the council takes action tonight and has the first reading of the water rate ordinance, we do have a proposed communication to go out to the public, we'd like your feedback on that, and we will discuss that later on the agenda.
Okay, well, I had my first call today about this consolidated trash pickup, and it was, it was a friendly call and, and was discussed, but nothing definite was, was decided, so I just want to know that people are, are questioning it.
Yeah, I, I've heard some, some things too Ron, and I know we, this is going to probably be redundant for a lot of people, we talked about this in the lead-up, but the communication is going to be key, and I'll, you know, this will bleed into some of the other ordinance changes that we're going to make, but, and I mentioned this to Chelsea, and I have a thousand percent confidence it's going to be handled, but just for the folks that, that may be paying attention to this for the first time, so we've been talking about these changes, I'm probably more excited about the garbage piece just because we don't have the opportunity to save people money at this kind of rate, I mean, it's, I think, a forty-five, almost a fifty percent discount to what people are paying, but I also, to your point Ron, I think we need to recognize the deficit that we're in from a communication standpoint, that I, I have, again, a ton of confidence on, on our handling of this, but the public perception is not that yet, the public perception is still where the group that, that added the Rock Creek fee and, and added thirty percent to their bill and, and barely gave a heads up on it three years ago, almost three years ago, so that, that's not the fault of, of anybody other than us as a council, I think, and so I want people to know that, I, I hope that I've learned that lesson to some degree, and these changes are not those changes, those changes were made based on what I will generously call intentionally inaccurate information, it was a progress over perfection decision that, that I still regret, but I think we needed to do, but the, the big, the big point is here, this is a positive change, but when this gets brought up, it, it brings out a very intense reaction because of how things were handled three years ago, so we need to really emphasize the fact that how many, fewer trucks are going to be on the road, how much people are going to save, and then on the water, I mean, I'm getting ahead, I know, but yes, we are increasing the rates for water, but we are significantly decreasing the fees, so it's entirely possible for some folks that their utility bill, which will include recycling and, and garbage, will be the same as their water bill was before, depending on their usage. Some people are, are going to go up, we are charging for recycling, which we've not done, and we're the only community in the metro that had not done that previously, but the communication is so critical to this over the next seven weeks or whatever we have to launch this, and I, I know I've said that before, but hopefully there's some new ears that are hearing that and, and some perspective gained on, on, on where we're at with the number of people, there's going to be a number, I'm not, you know, Ron, you've accused me of having thin skin before, and I, I have, but, and this isn't the case, because there's going to be a good number of people that aren't going to care what we say, but there are a lot of reasonable folks out there that if we give them this good information, we'll recognize it for what it is, and that's just going to, and I, I don't want to put all this work on staff, and I'm more than happy to help out to the extent that I can, but this is a big opportunity we have to dig out of a hole that, that we made for ourselves three years ago.
So specific to the waste collection, does anybody have any other comments to that?
I'm gonna, so my vote's not going to be representative of the fact, I think it's great to, to save money because, be a hidden secret there, I'm only, I'm going to stick with my, just my guts on the, on the small business, what it, what it's doing essentially monopolizing this, but I, I still don't think it's a bad thing, but I, I just. So I'm just putting it out there right now that cost savings are always good, but I'm going to just follow what I initially thought.
I will say, and I know we've got some other tangent things to get to in a little bit here, but on specifically this item, yeah, I know sometimes it's tough to take away a decision or there's other factors, but it's not very often that you can improve public safety by having less trucks on the road, you know, daily, save citizens money in the long term as far as wear and tear on our streets, and directly save them money on a bill, you know, that they're getting already, so I know there's a lot of factors here, but I think, thank you guys for all the work that went into this, and, you know, celebrate the positives when we have them like this, or like I said, it, not only does it save them money, it increases safety factor and other long-term benefits as well.
Well, it's, it's no doubt the right decision to make, I won't dispute that, I agree with what everybody said, it's, and it's nobody's fault but our own that we didn't move on this sooner, so we would have had time to get the communication out there, but what everybody said is, is true, I mean, it's, we're going to be criticized, but it's still the right decision to make, and I hope people understand that.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve resolution twenty-two thousand fifty-three.
Second.
Roll call please.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorec?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries, next item, review city website proposals and approve redesign, Chelsea?
Thank you, before the council tonight, we are submitting three proposals for a website redesign. Just a couple of things, and I did put this in my memo to the council, I was really holding off on this website redesign, not knowing the financial status of the city going forward, however, after Jason Attran, who did a lot of the legwork for this particular project, when he met with the vendors, it came to the realization that it was going to be three to four months before we would have a new website live. So I think that the general concern of not proceeding with a website redesign this evening are that we're going to have this new notification system, and it's going to be a great tool for communicating to our people, I'm a little bit hesitant of what it looks like not being able to navigate the city's website very well, and we are also going to start a new recreation software program to allow people to sign up for parks and recreation activities, hoping this fall. So just a couple of things in mind that I wanted to address before the group tonight, before you guys take a look at the bids, but we did receive three bids from three companies, Civic Plus, Global Reach, and Web Spec, and you'll see that we kind of broke it out for the council with the one-time fees versus annual fees, and we kind of did a price over a three-year stretch or a three-year pay period, sorry, period. Over three years, Global Reach is the lower bid at sixteen thousand dollars, Civic Plus is at seventeen thousand dollars, and Web Spec is at twenty-two thousand dollars, twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. I think that it is the recommendation of the staff to go with Civic Plus, they specialize in city website design, that's all they do actually, and they, they have good customer service, I was pretty pleased with the references that they provided us with as well as just a couple of templates for you to go look at for the city of Bondurant, Johnston, and Pleasant Hill. So I'm open to questions of the council, if you guys have any on this topic.
Hey Chelsea, is the, is the bid inclusive of the new functionality, or is that something they'll have to build after the main website is built, the registration functionality alerts, is that something that it comes with out of the box, or is that something we're going to have to have them build special?
No, so the, the notification system can work with our current website, they can actually work with any website, that's not a problem, it's the, it's the navigation piece, so the city of Johnston uses WINS, and they actually use it as well, so should not be an issue.
And, okay, so that's the registration part, the last, okay, all right, thank you, I just making sure they didn't have to customize anything for the new site.
I think it's a good time to be looking at this, given the fact that, you know, we've had some criticism for communications, and given today's technology, people go to websites quickly for information, and quick in our current website don't really go hand-in-hand, so I think a new website would be very beneficial for us moving forward, for the communication platform piece that we're really trying to push for right now.
I would agree, and I, I know Chelsea and I, we've spoke on this, I know she spoke to others about it as well, and I'm excited to see something moving forward, because yeah, I'm, I'll, I'll definitely raise my hand as not a fan of our current website, so I think anything that we could do to make it easier and get that information out quicker is great.
Since I'm so knowledgeable and a big fan of computers, I'm going to add my two cents worth, and anything that makes it easier, I'm in favor of.
Great, so since we don't have anything in front of us, we don't need to approve anything, right, just, you were just giving an update on that?
Actually, I, I do need the council to approve this, it is actually, I would say over my spending authority, so the council would need to approve the selection of a bid.
I think you can just do that by a motion to approve whichever one as the website designer for the city.
The recommendation of Civic Plus for that dollar amount? Okay.
Yep, and the dollar amount was I, it would be eleven thousand, so it would be the eight thousand dollars plus the three thousand, and we would make two payments of fifty-five hundred.
Approve Web Spec for the website proposal and redesign for eleven thousand.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Roll call please.
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh.
Sorry. I think Dave inadvertently said Web Spec, and it's for Civic Plus.
Uh, sorry, if I could remove Web Spec.
Civic Plus.
And that would be great, sorry about that.
Website, sorry.
Yeah, website too, good catch.
Okay.
Got that Jenny, good.
Everybody else good at that, great, roll call, go.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorec?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries, next item, first reading of ordinance twenty-two thousand five hundred, ending chapter one oh six concerning collection of solid waste, is there any questions on this, or is this just going along with the other change that we've made?
Correct.
Yep.
This is changing the ordinance.
Right.
Pardon me, I didn't catch that Chelsea.
This is just the amending of the ordinance, Ron.
Okay.
Around, around MWA?
Right, and primarily to take out any reference to permits, any, your old ordinance had a whole section about permits, issuing permits to any vendor who was picking up trash within Polk City, so we've taken those provisions out, but the most, the rest of it is pretty much the same.
Yeah, and this probably bleeds into the earlier point.
Yeah, and this probably bleeds into the earlier point, but I think it's, it's worth stating again. MWA is a big piece of this, and then, so we are going to a single hauler. The fact that their brokering, for lack of a better term, the, the contract, to me alleviates a lot of the concern amongst, well, you go to one and they give you a good rate upfront, and then they jack it up over time. I don't see that, that potential being here, given their role. They also have a, a customer service component. They have a, you know, subject matter expertise in terms of oversight on, on these haulers. So worth, worth the note for, as a part of this, as well as the earlier resolution.
And this contract is for how long?
Ron, this is, yep, this is just amending the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, so when we have a contract, when we have a contract, is it a one-year, two-year?
I believe that it is I believe it's indefinite, actually. I don't think, I don't recall that there being a timeline on it. I know that they do bid it out every three years, but I, I'm not
Two years left on us getting added to an existing contract.
It's a five-year agreement that MWA has a five-year that they do with the hauler. They do an RFP in two years.
We're, we're three years into a five-year contract, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, okay. And the price, and the price is good for the whole five years?
No.
No.
The, the price that we're entering into now is just good for one year. They can't guarantee that we'll be able to keep that price.
Well, now that, that sheds a different light on it, I believe.
I believe for that.
But they do go out and competitively bid it every
Correct, yep.
Your five years, so
Yep.
And get, you'll have that advantage over what you've got now.
Okay.
So, and, and then remember, two years from now, it'll be a, if the plan holds true, it'll be a regional bid. So I, if I can infer where you're going, Ron, I, I think there's as much potential for that rate to go down even further than there is for it to go up significantly.
Very good.
In, in two years, if I'm wrong, you can, you can remind me.
Oh, I, I would never do that.
Yeah, right.
Make it a motion, please.
I know.
Second.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Rack?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, first reading of ordinance 2020-700, amending the water rates. Chelsea?
Yes, so in front of you tonight is a new proposed ordinance related to water rates. This is in relation to PFM study and our work session at the last meeting. So this would increase water by about seven percent. It would increase irrigation costs by about 40%. That was the option that the council selected at the last work session. So currently, our availability fee is $13.71. That includes the first 1,000 gallons. I think that this is where it gets very complicated and explaining this to people. So we have shored this up even better than we had at the last meeting. Our availability fee is no longer going to include 1,000 gallons of usage. And the reason behind that is because our sewer availability fee does not include 1,000 gallons. So Jenny and I discussed this. We brought PFM into the discussion, and we all agreed that it would just be better for the two water and sewer rate structures to match, to make it clear to explain to people. So yes, it does clear the availability fee is going down, but it will no longer include 1,000 gallons of water. The usage charge is going to be increased from $5.50 per 1,000 gallons to $5.89. And then the irrigation cost will go up from $7.18 per 1,000 gallons to $10.05.
Thank you for saying that availability fee was, was hard to understand. Jenny, did you get a call all day from a citizen?
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't, he said he would call city, because I could, I couldn't explain it, so.
Yes, he was actually confused about irrigation, not the inside usage, because it wasn't spelled out separately. So I, I, but I got it, I got it figured out for him.
Okay, good, good, because I couldn't explain that availability fee. I, I thought I did the irrigation explanation well, but the other part I couldn't. And he said, maybe I'll just call City Hall, and I knew you could handle it. So thank you.
And it's convoluted, that, so all the, the ramblings I had on my soapbox earlier are true, but the, the fact that it's a difficult story to tell is, is problematic. To me, the, the lead here is we're, for, for water and sewer together, I know we're just talking about water here, but for, we're we're marginally increasing the rates, but we're dramatically dropping the fees. So depending on your usage, again, we saw the scenarios, and I'll, I'll leave that to staff to see how much of that gets put in, in, in marketing materials, but lower users, water and sewer bills will go down with this change. The rates itself go up, but that's misleading if you don't take into account the fees.
Correct. I, I, I do feel very strongly that that is probably one of our big hiccups with explaining this to people is having different guidelines for both availability fees. And I, I do think this will help, even though it further complicates our explanation of the overhaul.
Yeah, to me, the, the most resonant thing is those, is to do what, you know, you showed us. It's, it's the hypothetical bills. This is what your bill would have been before, and this is what it'll be, you know, same usage, and, and just kind of go through some included irrigation, all that stuff. It's tough.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, motion?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, first reading of ordinance 2020-800, amending the provisions regarding fireworks. Chief Zipker.
Yeah, how's it going?
Good.
All right, so this basically outlines adding two sections to the current 4111 fireworks code that basically consists of adding the owner occupancy responsibility section, as well as a penalty section. So with that, the owner occupancy portion of it basically says whoever's in charge of that property or the location, wherever they're doing this, that's outside of the parameters that you guys have already in the fireworks ordinance, actually charge of them. And then the penalty portion adds an actual scheduled fine. They can actually be just cited out right there, rather than getting the complaint citation where they have to go to court, plead their case. You'd have the option of just paying a fine for the violation, or going to court if you so choose.
I have no problem with that.
Unless enforced, it gives us some opportunity there, that otherwise, unless we actually witness who let off a firework outside of the hours and dates allowed, there's really not much we can do unless we see it happen, somebody admits it to us. Versus this put some accountability on whoever's hosting the party and control the, the residence or, or homeowner.
I did check with one of my partners, who's used this in several other, of the cities that we represent, and he says it's been pretty successful in terms of enforcement. They haven't had any problems with using, using it, so. Hasn't been challenged yet, so.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
This makes it a lot easier for us to enforce what we already have in place.
Oh, great job on finding this and coming up with something to put a little teeth in it, because I know that's always been, I know that's been a challenge these last several years, so great job. Any questions for Chief or for Amy? Need to get a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2020-800.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, third and final reading of ordinance 2020-400, adding the recycling chapter. Need a motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, reports in particulars. Chelsea, do you have anything?
Yeah. Jenny, do you think you can put our communication screen, so we can just get some feedback from the council? There you go. Guys, I recognize that there's a lot of information on that page, and I may need to just, you know, email it out, but we are having a pretty hard time, like, explaining all of this stuff with less words. So it is a pretty lengthy mailer that we're proposing. However, we feel like we're trying to get people as much information on this as we possibly can. But I'd just like you to take a look at it and give me some quick feedback.
Did you say mailer, Chelsea? So we're gonna send this out?
Correct. We are going to mail it with the utility bills. So some people would receive it electronically, and some would receive it in the mail.
Yeah, I, I, again, kicking the same horse that I've been talking about forever, but I, I appreciate this. I think the only thing you can do in a complicated, convoluted story is, is to tell it as best you can. This seems like a, a, a great start to that. Again, I, I think we've we just have a, have some work to do here. I know there were some folks that tried to recreate their own math. And, and, you know, that's fine, in, in a vacuum, when, when you don't have this information, so we can provide it. So, so people know that our, our collectively, as a utility that they pay here in Polk City is, I think, above average in terms of what it costs in, in other communities. And I know that perception is not out there in terms of what, what they pay for compared to other places, and that's just a product of the way it gets billed. So I think this is a great start. I really appreciate it, please.
Jenny, when would we send this out? When's your billing cycle? These would mail out on May 29.
We have some time on.
We do, and I could, I can put this in the next council packet too, but I just, we know that we're under a deadline to try to get communication out, and we're just trying to figure out the best way to do so.
Can you email this to us?
Yep.
Sooner than later?
Yep.
And then once we get more consensus, that, that, I would think that this is something we could share, both on our website and, and Facebook page and that kind of stuff, even before the end of the month deadline. And if, if we get vetted in enough time, the sooner the better, in my opinion.
Okay. Okay, will do. The only other thing that I had to report to the group is Mayor and I have been talking about reopening, and we don't think we're there yet, as far as public facilities go. Quite a few other cities throughout the metro are state, are taking the stance that they're not going to talk about reopening until June. So our plan as of right now is, we do have a phased approach in place, but the, the drop dead day is kind of what is lingering, that we just don't know. So we've been talking, and we plan to talk about every week, just to kind of talk this through and make sure the timing's appropriate. But obviously, as I have information, I will share it with the group, but as of right now, we do not have a date set to reopen City Hall or any of the public facilities.
That's smart. I'm err on the side of caution. Just too many unknowns, too many variables, so thank you for that. Okay, Chelsea, do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Yep. I don't know, I'll start with staff. Kathleen, do you have anything else? Amy? Either chief? Did you, Jim, yes or no? Give me a thumbs up or thumbs down? All right, perfect. Mike?
Nothing at this time.
Awesome. Jason?
Nothing to report.
Amy?
Nothing.
Excellent. We'll go around the room, start at the top on my screen. Rob?
Couple relative quick things, just so in, in planning for the Des Moines partnership trip, we had scheduled some time with Senator Ernst. And her office was gracious enough to extend that to a phone call, rather, since the trip got canceled. So Mayor Chelsea, Jeff, myself, met with her last week, and it was a good discussion. I'm a little concerned she may try and pull Chelsea as chief of staff. That was a little bit too cozy of a relationship for me there. She was recognizing what we had, so I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about that, but otherwise, it was a good meeting. Talked about COVID. We talked about some things with the Army Corps that they were gonna look into, and, and some following up on grants. So appreciate that help that, that her office could provide. And then I took a small amount of pride in Senator Ernst's meeting with us, and, and the next day, the vice president. So I'm sure it was a much more exciting Thursday for her than Friday with him, but I don't know that for sure. The other thing, kind of a downer last week in, in announcing the, the festival decision by the executive committee, I certainly respect what they did, respect how they did it. It just, it stinks. It's been, you know, a highlight of my summer and a lot of people's, and just not in the cards this year, so it's unfortunate, but appreciate the way that, that Al and the executive committee handled that, and, and it is what it is, so that's, that's all I have.
Hey, Chief, I know you just wanted to chime in on something. I'll punt over to you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Just wanted to announce that we're going to do the pancake drive-through. Come down Van Dorn, towards Third Street, and swing in front of the fire station, and we'll provide a, a container of pancakes and sausage donation at will. We'll be wearing appropriate personal protective equipment, and all of our donations will go to the Polk City, the local food bank, if you will, to help provide some meals for people that are less fortunate.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Jeff, you're up next on my screen.
Just gonna echo what Rob said about the Four Seasons Festival. It's a, it's definitely a bummer for 2020, but I think we were expecting it, unfortunately. Hopefully, we have an opportunity, maybe to have some sort of mini-festival or get together or something in the fall, if everything works out. If it doesn't, hopefully, we have a great 2021. if everything works out. If it doesn't, hopefully, we have a great 2021 Four Seasons Festival.
That's all I got. Ron? Ron?
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't asleep. Yeah, that's too bad about the festival, but I think it's a good decision. Spent a lot of time on it, it sounds like, and made the right decision. And Chelsea, good decision on not opening up. We don't want to rush anything. Like Dave said, they're on the side of caution if you're going to err. And I said I would share with people that the call I got today was not happy with the increased irrigation fee, but I think I did a good job of explaining it, and hopefully, he understands. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot.
Mandy?
I don't really know how to say what I want to say here, but back to the rezoning issue that came tonight. I know that went through P&amp;Z several times. I think staff spent a lot of time on it. The developers spent a lot of time on it. P&amp;Z spent a lot of time on it. I know residents right nearby there are strongly opposed to commercial. I think we have limited opportunities for commercial development around or in Polk City. And I think one of the comments was about being greedy or something like that. But really, it is part of our duty to look ahead and knowing that a commercial tax base is needed in this town so that we don't have to continually put more of a tax burden on our residents. So, I don't have anything to say other than, I think, probably sooner rather than later. You know, because I don't know if P&amp;Z would have good direction at this point as far as what we would expect to see there. I know we talked specifically about maybe more of a buffer between the commercial and the residential, but I think at some point, we maybe need to clarify what our intentions of that area are. Because I think that was a good point, too, that there are only going to be more residences there over time, and the conversation's going to just get harder over time. So, that's my comment on that. And I know we, again, had some, we've had some tough conversations with water rates, sewer rates, all of that kind of stuff. I know we have a ways to go on figuring out details of communication. But I think, you know, the bottom line message is we took a step back and we reevaluated everything, and I think we landed in the spot that's in the best interest of our city as a whole. Slight increase to some people, some more than others. But I, again, feel like we had really good information in making our decisions, and we're continuing to trend in that direction. So, I appreciate all the work that's gone into that, and we'll figure out the best way to communicate it. But I know a lot has gone into it already. That's all.
And Dave?
Nothing other than what about the Four Seasons Festival at this time, and appreciate everybody's hard work on the budget, and that's about it for now.
Perfect. I do have a couple things under my stuff. I've got three proclamations that I want to start with. Some of these are easier to read due to the cause than others. So, we'll start with Public Works. So, it's Public Works, professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and service that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, well-being, people of Polk City. And now, therefore, I, Jason Morris, Mayor of Polk City, do hereby designate the week of May 17 through the 23 as National Public Works Week in Polk City, Iowa, and urge all citizens to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, employees by recognizing the sustainable contributions they make protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Second one. Right? Yep, second one. We have another proclamation for National Police Week, whereas Congress and President of the United States have designated Friday, May 15, so we missed it, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls is National Police Week to honor the service and sacrifice those law enforcement officers that risked their lives for our communities to safeguard our democracy. Now, therefore, I, Jason Morris, Mayor of Polk City, do hereby recognize the week of May 10 through the 16th as National Police Week in Polk City, Iowa, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and our communities across the nation. We also urge all citizens to recognize the officer's faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities. The last proclamation is for EMS Week. And there's a long whereas, and I'll go on to say that the emergency medical services are vital public service. Members of the emergency medical services team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And now, therefore, I, Jason Morris, Mayor of Polk City, do hereby recognize and proclaim the week of May 17 through the 23rd, 2020, as Emergency Medical Services Week. So, those are the three proclamations. And Jenny?
Yes.
Didn't we have another one that was last week?
Yes.
And we missed it.
It's okay.
I know. So, last week was a public, or, sorry, City Clerks Week, and Jenny was supposed to get me a proclamation for City Clerks Week, and she conveniently forgot it in the pile of stuff that I have here to sign tonight. So, we'll make that right, Jenny. Yeah. For some reason, I wasn't surprised to not see that proclamation tonight, so. Yeah, I've got a couple other things. I had a couple people reach out to me and ask that I make a couple comments here. From Salaville, you've probably seen some stuff, but particularly out of the Salaville office as far as their guidance to reopening. And so, some of their campgrounds have reopened. State campgrounds did reopen. Federal campgrounds are reopening the first of June. But the other thing that is somewhat, you know, just discouraging in the time that we live in is that as some of the areas open, playgrounds and picnic shelters at the federal parks, particularly the campgrounds and everything around the lake, they're going to be closed for this whole season of 2020. So, that will all be closed. They're trying to figure out how to get back on some things, but generally speaking, no special events this year. Programs, you know, things are just going to be a little weird out there. But unfortunately, all of their parks and, I'm sorry, all of their playground equipment and their picnic shelters will be closed. So, that's a bummer. And we're working closely with them as far as proper reopening when it comes to our sports complex as well. And I've been staying in touch with them and Mike as well. As far as the festival goes, I also wanted to echo some of those same comments and thank the executive committee for making that tough decision. You know, we've been talking about it with Bridget, Al, for over the last month, really paying some pretty close attention as far as what some of the other communities were doing. And unfortunately, as some of those bigger events canceled, it became apparent that this would probably happen. And it's terribly unfortunate, but obviously, the right decision, and look forward to figuring out what can happen next. I was asked to comment here to thank everybody who stepped up to support the grab-and-go meals at the school. Those meals are going to be stopping on the 27th of May. The community and the Polk City, let's see, community has responded with food and donations in a very amazing way for the Comet Cupboard. Recently, the Kiwanis, as well as the Polk City Community Foundation, made some various generous donations and quote, "Their mission is to support the kids of Polk City, and overwhelmingly feel honored to assist, and we appreciate their support." Some quick stats about some of the usage that's been going on. I know I've had some questions. Eight bags of groceries have been going out a day. On the May food bag drive, well over a hundred bags went out to families, which does not include the families that were, that needed immediate assistance before the drive. The dozen elderly, the dozen elderly have families, I'm sorry, the dozen elderly that have bags dropped off to their doorsteps and families with five or more members that are receiving two bags. There are a dozen families that need immediate assistance, and volunteers are following on a weekly basis to provide them with food. If anybody is asking how you can help, peanut butter and cereal are always needed. So, the Comet Cupboard is being used, and it's a daily conversation I know that I've been having. And I'm thrilled with the use with the volunteers who've been putting forth the effort. But definitely give it a second thought about the people who are in need. Another comment on the festival, a couple points that need to be given. The business that would have sponsored the festival, for those businesses that wouldn't, or that would have sponsored the festival and have the dollars to do so now. You know, so if you've been going to the festival, use that money to maybe support your local businesses that aren't as fortunate. Go out to eat, buy a shirt, bike, art class, stop by Fender's, buy a craft beer, or just simply donate to a nonprofit. Obviously, they're going to feel an impact on the small business front as well. So, if you can get out and support them. And then furthermore, for the community that would have bought lemonade from the Polk City Women, pork chop from the Legion, taco in a bag from the Kiwanis, considering making a donation off to that nonprofit as well. The dollars they make this year go to support the community next year. And I know a lot of their budgets are being negatively impacted because of the fundraisers that they're not able to have, which ultimately will have an impact on those who they're supporting. Anyway, so I just wanted to put a couple of those things on your radar, those things that are kind of happening behind the scenes, and appreciate all those who are stepping up and helping out with all those events. Jim, for you guys for having your pancake breakfast, it's going to give those funds back. Jeremy, I know your group made a donation off to the Grab and Go, so appreciate everybody's time and effort in stepping up in this time of need. I think it's going to be going on for quite some time. And that's all I have. And with that being said, as a reminder, our next council meeting, what's that? Go ahead, Ron.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just a reminder that the next meeting is on Tuesday, the 26th of May, instead of Monday.
Very good.
Now, the floor is yours.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you in a couple weeks.
Bye-bye.